Yes, now we are being recorded.
Okay, so I'll call this meeting to order at 6:03. Um, I will find a pen that works. So our first order of business is to approve the minutes of March 16th, which as I was reading seemed like an eternity ago.
It does, doesn't it?
Yeah. So did everybody get a chance to read it?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Scott? But. Okay. Um. Okay. So I'm gonna assume that since nobody said anything, um, let's see. Everybody's sitting at a computer, right? Should we just vote by chat?
Yeah, you can, um.
Because that's recorded as part of the meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. So first I need a motion though.
I'll move.
Diane's on the line, right Diane?
I'll move that we approve the minutes for March 16th.
Okay, so oops, is there a second?
Second. Colleen seconds.
Um, okay, is there any discussion? No, I don't hear any. Okay. Um, well, we'll just go with a, everybody take yourself off mute and we'll just go with an aye and a nay and hopefully nobody says nay. Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, I think we got it. Um, I don't believe I saw any public on the line. No?
No, I don't see anybody.
Um, okay. And then, um, moving on to the agenda. We need to add. So we're gonna replace item B. Uh, so resignation will move to item B and then item C will be a budget. Statewide budget discussion. Um, does that sound good? Um, and I'll talk about item, well, okay, we'll leave item B, but it's gonna change topics. It's gonna be treasurer position, so we'll get rid of the resignation and discussion. Okay, and then we'll move on to the resignations and then the budget. Okay. So the first one would be COVID-19 and I think I will turn that over to Christine, David and Craig.
Yeah, I think it might, hold on, am I on mute? Am I on mute? No, I'm not on mute.
No.
Yeah, so, so I think because Craig's had a long day and uh, it was heartwarming to watch all of that come together finally this morning. I mean, that's been one of our biggest, other than the instructional piece and the, all the stuff that goes along with trying to figure that all out during this COVID period. And believe me, that's a work in progress and we'll talk about that. And Christine can talk about that, but the other biggest task we've been trying to complete is serving somewhere between 700 and 800 meals a day. And uh, so I, I did, uh, I did, um, just wanted to say that, yeah, I mean Craig's just done an incredible job. So Craig, do you want to talk a little bit about while you're on the line and then you can, you don't have to stick around, but how, uh, how things went this morning?
Yeah, so I, I, I just was saying. Everything went really well. I mean, we brought in all the food on Thursday or Friday. Um. Produced a bunch of food on Friday, so we felt, you know, going in today to today, we were feeling very confident that we were gonna have the operation up and running out of Windsor very smoothly. And um, things were good. And to, and like I said, the morning was good, everybody showed up. We had a lot of volunteers, a lot of people there. Um, probably too many, honestly. Um. With Jimmy's crew, Jim's crew was there at 7:30. Uh, there were like six of those, five of those folks. And then Wendy's people came in and uh, another five, I think, five at least. So we were kinda tight in there. Um, but Heather from Weathersfield sort of is leading the pack and organizing. And Rodney's in the kitchen producing food, doing the production. Emily and Grady is our crew. And um, so we were doing, things were going good until about 9:15. And when I was aware, made aware that we were 145 lunches short. Um, so thank God that we had had all the ingredients. We had to slice some turkey, but we had all the ingredients. We busted out another 145 meals in about 25 minutes.
Wow.
And uh, no buses were waiting, so everything was, was good. And then, you know.
My bus was actually a little early today, Craig.
Yeah.
I was expecting a delay, it's amazing.
Good. Um, so you know, we got right into production and uh, for tomorrow. And we're looking good tomorrow. We did double counted. We came, it all came together after all the meals were put out and we, you know, Heather is very particular. And um, he didn't like a few things, so we came together and worked together to get the things straightened out. And uh, came up with a procedure that seems to be working, seemed to work pretty well. So uh, tomorrow spaghetti or pen pasta with meatballs and marinara and green beans. Bagel and fruit, canned fruit. Um, we're gonna be tight on containers. I bet, I'll be honest, I was a little conservative on the container purchasing. Just because I'm trying to be conservative, um, when you're doing, so we did, we put the bagel, we wanted to use up some of the canned fruit that was leftover from Windsor and other, you know, and then we brought all the inventory from Heartland and Weathersfield from like canned fruit and things that we can use from the commodities to Windsor on Thursday. So we had a fair amount of canned fruits. We used the two compartment containers for the bagel and fruit. So we didn't have to put fruit in a small portion cup. So we did 1400, we only have one um, sealer right now because we didn't get the mold for the other one. So we're only using one sealer, so we did 1,400 meals today out of one sealer and that took a while. Um, we got done production about 3 o'clock. But we're getting the next, the other mold tomorrow for the other machine. So we should be more efficient. So, I mean, all in all, things went good. The pours, the product looked good. Um. The team worked well together, so I mean, I think by the end of the week, we'll be good. But it's just, put the space in the walk-ins kinda tight. Because we gotta think about, now it's about logistics, right? It's about how many containers can we fit in the walk-in? How many sheet pans do we have? Um, all of those things that we kinda didn't think about with that much production, so. We're good.
Craig, how many, how many meals total did you serve? I don't know if I missed that.
Today we served 685.
Wow. That's impressive.
Breakfast and lunches, so 685 times two.
Yeah, and um, Windsor was there? The population served there about the same? Like, are we expecting that to increase now that the food quality is gonna increase?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I think we will see the food. We had, so they asked us for 10 more meals today. So that's, that's an increase after the first day. Uh, Albert Bridge asked for five more. Um, so I think once by next week, I think we'll see an increase. It, it's gonna take a week probably.
Yeah.
Um, so.
But that's great and hopefully word of mouth will get out.
Yeah, so I mean, the, the thing that I don't love, we're putting everything in a plastic bag that in, this is the thing that we gotta really think about and it's not gonna change overnight, but we're putting all like breakfast and lunch and milk and juice and fruit in a plastic like grocery bag, right? Handled grocery bag. I don't really love that, that um, delivery. It's efficient because we can put the meal in and it's one bag and we see five kids at the bus or whatever, five, you know, at the bus stop, we need five. We can just pick up five and, and place it in the cooler or in there on the ground or whatever. But it's, plastic bags are, it's creating a lot of waste. We have a ton of waste right now. So we just, I just, I'm, my, I got my finger on the pulse with that and we gotta figure out what we're gonna do. Yes, Brittany?
Would um, paper bags work better?
Yeah, so I have a call in with Swish White River and he's gonna give us a quote. He's seeing what he can find for a smaller grocery style bag with a handle that looks nice. Uh, but papers honestly is more expensive.
Yeah, I know. I would give them right at first, um, and that, it seemed to work well. I mean, it was, we could get rid of it right away. We knew it was recyclable or we burned it, you know, like in a fire pit or whatever. Um, it seemed to work okay. The only issue with it was, um, if, if they're leaving it on the ground for whatever reason, right? Like at our house, it's, you know, um, it got wet and that was a problem. Or even in a cooler, if the cooler was wet on the inside, then it, you know, Jace would be running the house and it'd fall all over the yard. But um, at least it wasn't, it was something that you could easily get rid of and feel okay about, you know?
Right. Yeah, so, I mean, Weathersfield had a bunch of people, you know, they had a bunch of um, donations. So we're utilizing what we have currently and we have enough probably for the week. Um, so now then we're gonna work on what, what a better plan is. I mean, I thought if we could put the things on the bus, it's all production though, that's the problem. If we put crates of milk and crates of juice and apples and meals on the bus, then the people on the bus are gonna have to physically find, okay, I got three. So one milk, one juice, one meal, one breakfast and do it on the bus rather than in the building. So I mean, it's, there's no perfect scenario, I don't think. I just, I just wanna be concerned about the waste and environmentally, you know, we need to be representing well. Um, like I said, a plastic bag is not the end of the world, but it's not great, so.
Craig, I'll admit that I saw the plastic bag today and I was like, oh, they went to plastic. But then my next immediate thought was, you know what? We're, we're feeding kids and it doesn't matter. Um, and as soon as I saw it, I was like, oh, they're individually packaged. Like it's, it was immediately clear to me why you guys went that way. And I know you're a perfectionist and I know that you want it to be completely right, but I'm kind of in a mode that this whole situation is completely wrong and we're doing a bang up job. And so I don't want you to feel pressure from us, like on a normal day, I'd be like, no, don't do it in plastic. But right now, I think it's a bit of a survival mode and so don't, don't beat yourself up too much.
Yeah.
It also looks so much faster at the bus stop itself, like, and it just made that interaction like quicker, you know? And so I think it's, I think it's also just, it was a safer thing. So yeah, I would love to see paper, that would be great, um, but I totally understand, um, why, you know, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. But the other thing is it's sort of, it's kinda messy. That's, that's the other piece of it. That's not tight and tidy and it just doesn't represent well and I think.
Yeah, the bags are all over the place, you mean, like.
Yeah. And who knows what it's looking like when you get it there? It's probably upside down.
Yeah.
And I don't, like I said, I don't like that. It is a, it's a little thing, but it's, it's the details that matter, right? And I think as we continue to build this, we have to continue to look at the details and fix, and try to fix it the best we can.
Right, because you're gonna be doing it in the summer going forward anyway. This isn't something, it's not a production thing that goes away for you.
It's not going away, right.
I do agree with um, with Nicole and that it, this, we're doing the best we can right now, that it's fine. But the, I totally get wanting to do it different. What about a box, like a carton?
Yeah, yeah, that, they do have nice cartons, but I don't know if we can fit both the lunch and breakfast and milk and juice.
Too much of a box?
But it's another, it's a good suggestion.
I don't know.
What, Craig, what are those, do those cartons look like the old, uh, I'm dating myself here, but the old drive-in cartons, you know, when you went to the drive-in? You, you, it would all act into like a soda crate, is that, is that what?
No, it's, well, I don't know, I mean, yeah, you are dating yourself a little bit, David. Sort of like, all I can think of is, you know, like the bros, like the fried chicken you get at Mar, uh, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's what I was thinking.
It's kind of like that foldable container.
Yeah, I, I see what you mean.
But that would add, putting them together and it would add, the cost of that would be huge.
Probably crazy, yeah. I'll tell you the truth, what I'm more, what I'm more concerned about, I, I, I was a bad boy today and I snuck out uh, and drove down because I really wanted to see this first day in action. And in a lot of ways, you know, I'm glad that I did. Um, be, because it was, A, first of all, it was just heartwarming to watch everybody kinda just coming together in one spot to feed kids. I mean, that's, that's incredible. Um, and it was really a well-oiled machine between, between Craig and, and Jim and Wendy. I mean, that, that's a, that's a definitely a triad there that is unstoppable. I mean, you know, because we had, we had some resistance, you know, from one particular district. Uh, and, um, and their bus drivers especially were a little bit feisty. But I saw Wendy meet them right there when they pulled up. I, I saw Jim and Wendy, hey, good morning, how's everybody? You know, welcome to, you know, welcome to Windsor and it was, it was just kind of a very upbeat atmosphere. Um, and uh, and again, a precision machine. We told those bus drivers, you are not gonna have to get off that bus. We will load the bus. And I watched them load those buses and within 10 minutes, those buses were loaded and they were out of the lot going back to their schools to pick up the volunteers. So, so that was incredible, but um, and I, and I, I happen to be there too. I called Craig just to thank him and, you know, we, they were probably halfway through the second round of buses, I guess. And I called Craig and Craig said, can't talk right now, Dave, sorry, I'm 140 meals short. So uh, so we had to hang up and, and that was the way it was. But it was good because I watched how responsive that, that whole crew was in the middle of what could have been a big crisis. And uh, and they pulled it off. By the time that last wave of buses came in, Craig had done that, the extra 140 meals. They were all bagged and they were out on that sidewalk and ready to, to load. So I mean, it was, it was an incredible morning and I'm glad I was there because it was, uh, it was worth noting. I know Jim took a few pictures, which was great, he did, you know, and um, but I think Craig, you and I can, you know, follow up a little bit on, on that container. One of the things I'm more, I'm more concerned about and maybe you're not, Craig, but I think as the weather gets warmer and that stuff sits on that sidewalk, uh, or wherever we put it, you know, I, I, I'm worried about that box container with those bags. And I don't know whether it wouldn't, would be worth uh, buying some insulated bags that would keep things cold. Have you thought about that?
Yeah, we have, we purchased, we have a fair amount of insulated bags and we have purchased more insulated bags for the summer program. So I think that's another piece. John, our boy John from Heartland, the bus dr, John, um.
Yeah, John.
Yeah, anyway, he was, I mean, he was, he's, he's always on our side. And he, and that's the first thing he said when I saw, when I cleared his bus this afternoon was, do you want me to bring down those insulated bags from Heartland to make sure that we can keep the milk cold? And I said, yeah, I'll let you know, John, when we need them.
Nice, yeah, I mean, it was 44 degrees today, so it wasn't a big doubt, right? John Sammel is what's.
John Sammel, yeah.
Yeah, John Sammel, he's a great guy. And uh, that's what I mean, everybody's got everybody's back, which is, which is absolutely incredible. And uh, and that's a real team spirit. But yeah, I think you're gonna get to that point, I think, where you're gonna need those. And plus, the other thing too is the insulated bag, at least, you know, it, that would help a little bit with that presentation and maybe sturdying up those plastic bags a little bit if we stay with plastic. But um, but I mean, it, it couldn't have run any more smoothly for day one. I, I just, I really tossed and turned all weekend just saying that, uh, oh my God, what have, what have we done? And, you know, because I think everybody was saying that you just, why, why are we doing this? It's not gonna work, it's, you know, we can't get the same quality out of that many lunches and breakfasts and.
I've always had the faith, David, I don't know, I've always had the faith.
I appreciate that. I would wake up at 3 o'clock in the morning and just say, oh my God, what, what have we done? Because I knew a lot of this rested, because Craig and Jim and I kind of, you know, we kind of birthed this together, knowing that we had to get this done because we were under pressure from our insurance company to get it all in one place. We were under pressure from OSHA to get it all in one place. We were under pressure to some degree from Child Nutrition to get it all in one place. And all the single districts around us, like Hartford and Springfield, they already had, Brattleboro, they had already centralized everything to one building. But I know the drama that goes into any mention of centralization. People just, for some reason, more so in one town than the other towns, but they just go, they just go nuts. And so we literally, for, for one solid week, I bet all I did was, was kinda fight that political battle. And I tried to keep the principles out of it. I tried to keep Craig and Jim out of it. And in the end, I think we turned a corner and I think we're okay with it. But I think it, it was, you know, in the end, it's really, when it's the right thing to do, it's the right thing to do. And, and, and we had, we, but, you know, people didn't know that we were getting pressure from a lot of different places. But Craig, I, I just can't say how thankful I am to you and Jim and Wendy and that whole crew. Uh, because that was asking a lot to make that all happen uh, in, in a different place for two of those buildings. And I think that's great. And I also think the team now, they're gonna be used to working together. I said to Craig that one of the advantages of this might be, you know, somebody, somebody goes down at Heartland, we can maybe take somebody from Weathersfield and they're not gonna feel like, I don't know that, those people, I don't, I don't know any of them, you know? I, I think, I think it could end up being a, a big asset for us in the end that we see that, as we talk about all the time, we just see that, that bigger picture. And we see that we're really one-up-a-valley community and we need to think that way. But I appreciate all you did, Craig, to make it work.
Thank you, David. So, I mean, I'll say, I'll, I'll, I'll end with a couple things. So when I was leaving, me and Heather and Rodney were kinda just talking about tomorrow. And Rodney said, what a wonderful team. I mean, this is a guy that just started last week, Monday. Um, something brand new. Um, been in the restaurant industry for a long time, but not in school food service. So just for him to see that the team is willing to work together, come together and, and he is, you know, he was hired to be my assistant and he's gonna be, have some influence at Windsor, at Heartland, at Weathersfield. To be kinda, at the end of the day, you know, maybe a year or two down the road, but probably be the executive chef of Windsor Southeast Supervisor Union Food Program. So, I mean, he's seeing that they're getting to work together to create this bigger program to benefit everybody in the SU. So that's good. Um, he's got a long ways to go, but um, it's good. And the other thing is, so I got an email from Rosie Krueger this afternoon, well, not Rosie, but um, Island, right, Island, her assistant. Um, so they continue to reach out and want Windsor to, well, there's a lot of opportunity to feed other adults um, in hotels right now. So I got an email this afternoon, said there's three adults in the Windsor Hotel. I don't even know where that is, but can you feed them? And I said, absolutely, because we're gonna say absolutely, even if we can't, we're gonna figure out how we can. Um, but just, just to think about it, they're, they're, we, for reimbursement, 3.50 for breakfast, $5 for lunch, $5 for dinner. They want us to provide three meals a day, two lunch and one breakfast. So that's good math, I mean, that's a big, if we can continue to do that and show that we're willing to provide for the, the communities. And I think it goes all the way to Hartford and all the way to Springfield. Claremont, I mean, I think there's a lot of opportunity that we could really benefit our whole program on doing some extra meals right now. And I mean, it's all USDA money. Who knows how they're gonna pay for this bill? But all we gotta do is provide the numbers and they're gonna pay us somehow. So I just think that, that it's another big opportunity for us to show that when, you know, Windsor Southeast Supervisor Union's in it, to be part of the community and um, provide for our neighbors, so it's good. That's all I got.
Yeah, and while, while, while we're embarrassing people too, I want to, uh, I want to shout out to Beth, Roy and Nikki, because I, I remember those days a year or two ago, when we were sitting at those meetings with Cafe Services and with the food committees and, and everybody uh, you know, just exhausted, thinking that we were never gonna, we just, weren't gonna get this off the dime and, and you know, and, and here we are. So I think, you know, persistence pays off and when you've got the right, you know, the right model, um, you know, it, it just, you know, it, it just takes off. So I, I think, I think Heartland really took the leadership on all of this. You know, initially, two, two and a half years ago, I had to be convinced that it was time to throw Cafe Services out, you know, because I had committed a lot to them and when, they'd been with Windsor for 21 years. So it was not an easy decision. Um, but I think when everybody worked together in that team format, uh, I think it's just another example of how, you know, the synergy just starts to happen. It starts to come together. I remember trying to convince the Heartland staff about the breakfast program and what that, what that looked like. I mean, I had to.
You're bringing back the PTSD.
I know, I know. I know.
It's all, it's really all Nikki's fault, because she originally put that.
Oh, yeah.
What, of school meals on the, on the, on the agenda of a board meeting. So it's all her fault, the original.
And I, and Nikki almost cost me my job, there's no question about it. I remember, I remembered that, but, but you know what? You stayed with it, Nikki, and you, you know, and we, we just said, no, this is what we're gonna do. And we, and we did it. And when you've got all those stars aligned, the board support, board chair support and superintendent support, and it just kinda, that's when it flows. And, and I think it, it shows that, you know, when we decide something as a group and we got, and we have that passion, then we can, there's no stopping us. And so I carry that into curriculum, instruction, programs, middle school, all those other things, I think we can, you know, the, the sky is the limit. That's my, that's my, and I'm not trying, trying to be too dramatic, but I think it's just a good, a good symbol of what we can do.
So I have a question. Uh, I have a question about this meals related, but perhaps may be answered by either Craig or Christine or, or Brittany, but about the high school students? Weathersfield, Heartland, West Windsor High School students are, haven't heard much about that, but how are we increasing? Or are we finding more of them?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, we are, we are, what, feeding them or are we intriguing them?
Yeah. Oh, I think he's talking about feeding.
Yeah, so this is a funny story, this is a little bit interesting. I talked to Anton about two weeks ago and he kept on questioning me, why the Weathersfield bus? So there was a, there's a, there's an area, I don't know if it's on Route 5 or what, but there was a Windsor bus and a Weathersfield bus kinda button up against each other on the town line. And um, And um, all the kids were going over to the Weathersfield bus route because of the qua, because the quality of the meals that were serving out of Weathersfield was much higher and much better um, than Windsor. So we were taking like twenty meals a day away from Windsor and serving them on the Weathersfield bus route. Um, so that, and he kept on asking me if we, he, we could stop sending Weathersfield bus. And this was all in the time of David and Jim, where, you know, in the transition period of getting rid of Cafe Services. So I didn't say much. I was like, yeah, I'll continue to talk to David about it, but we're feeding a fair amount of high school kids. Um, I mean, our numbers are are strong. I mean, out of Weathersfield, we were doing about two hundred, again, today, two hundred and fifty meals for the town of Weathersfield. Like I told the Weathersfield Board the other day, um, I mean, on an average, we were serving seventy breakfasts and a hundred and thirty-five to forty-five meals a day in Weathersfield. Um, so we're doubling both breakfast and, you know, tripling breakfast almost, um, and doubling lunches. Um, just with this service. So there is some high school kids, there are some other scenarios, but it's good. Weathers, I mean, Heartland is still, you know, we're doing about a hundred and eighty-five meals in Weathersfield. I mean, in Heartland. Um, I'd like to see that number go up. I don't know. I mean, we're averaging two hundred when we're in seat, in, in session. So I don't know if it's just, we're not, we're not unable to reach them. I I'm not sure what that is, but.
Well, we did put, we did put out a um, survey, Nikki helped with it for, to get their information on high school students. We were serving a fair amount before that survey, survey went out, um, because people had been reaching out through email. And then I emailed Craig and Kelly, and we put them on the list. Um, in the beginning, we were having to keep track of which students were um, taking the meals. Now we um, don't have to do that, that anymore. We qualify with Windsor for serving all kids for, I think, under the summer program, um, regulations. So we did get some takers on that survey, which um, we added to the list, and I've put it in the newsletter a couple of times. So if there are other, other methods, you know, of getting kids food, um, or advertising it, we're, you know, open to whatever ideas anybody has, because we definitely, that's a goal.
Do you think some of the issue might be that families, um, if they're working and they're not in the home, they're worried about the food sitting out or not being able to go down to the bus stop at that time to go get it?
That might be, yeah, that might be an issue. Yeah.
Yeah, there are a lot of people working, and why would they want their food sitting out all day when they can't go get it? Because their kids are at daycare, or their kids are with grandparents or whatever, you know?
Some of that, although we, we are working, and people email about getting food at different places, because their kids are in other, other homes. And we've made, you know, you know, how to do that. Um, along with, people have been great, if they, you know, we had a family email, I had a family email, it's yesterday, saying need the meals this week, for whatever reason, I don't know why, um, but, you know, would like them again the following week. So people are at least, you know, communicating their needs, which is great.
Yeah, that's great.
At least.
I would also say, I mean, just, I think if I, a way to phrase it in the newsletter, too, of like, give your parents, give yourself a break, go get lunch, you know, it's like, because that's the way I view my, like, lunch break every day of like, we have one thing I don't have to do. And so, you know, really kind of pushing it out of there. And it's not, and it's also like that feeling of like, well, these are, it's for people that are in need. I don't think I'm in need enough. And it's that kind of feel. So just kind of playing it up of like, it doesn't matter, it's for everybody. Um, and just kind of pushing it out there of like, give yourself a break, get some, you know, support, support this and and uh, eat this delicious food. So I think that's, you know, I don't know, because I know, I don't, it seems, it's always like, oh, is it, am I, am I needy enough for this?
Once the word gets out, too, because like, we were, Jace was getting the meals from Albert Bridge, and they were awful. Like, he wouldn't even eat them. I thought about canceling, too, until we finally got one of the meals from Craig, and then it was like, now he's gonna eat them all the time. And so it's worth it. But before, I was like, this is just going to waste, because the bread was stale, and he wasn't gonna eat it, you know?
I had a question. Is there an advantage for us to increase numbers?
Yeah.
Or what is the advantage if we increase the numbers?
Well, the advantage of, is the, the, the reimbursement rate is higher in summer, you know, for meals. But right now, it's three fifty a meal for lunch.
Oh, that's what you were saying. Okay.
NSLP, there isn't, I mean, NSLP is only like three thirty-four or something like that. So the, the, the advantage, the more we serve, the more money we get, the more money. And it, and it helps.
More you have to work with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Craig, with these, these rates, because these are higher rates than a normal lunch rate.
Right.
And so you're able to produce these meals that are below that rate.
Right.
Yeah, so essentially, that difference is what the school can pocket then.
What the package.
Actually operate in the black. Yeah.
Yeah. But with the packaging, the packaging does cost more. I mean, that is definitely, like, so those containers, those black containers today, you know, they're costing thirty-five, they're like thirty-two cents a piece. So.
That's a lot. Yeah.
They're ovenable, they're refrigerated, you know, they're cold or hot, you can put them in the oven. So, I mean, every container out there disposable is expensive. I mean, it's pennies. You know, so I can get some for twenty-nine, some for thirty-five, some for thirty-two. I mean, but
Yeah.
recyclables are expensive.
I think it's worth it. And, yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I also think the thing we've got to remember, you know, which is sort of not, you know, the people on this call, don't think about this very often, but I still say from the feedback I've gotten for a lot of parents, this might be the only real meal that they're gonna have in a given day. And, you know, I think sometimes, you know, because of, you know, our situation, you know, and everybody's a little different on this call, but, but the truth is, you know, to to know that we're giving those kids, a lot of those kids, a really solid meal. That I think that's really the, the, the heroic nature of what, what we're doing. But I, I think, Craig, you should, let's keep thinking about that packaging. You know, you and I are pretty good about cooking up schemes, so if you, you know, if you think you've got some ideas, just just, just run them by me. And I think in the end, you know, and we're gonna get to this later on, but I think in the end, as that meal count continues to increase, I think this is also gonna work out for us financially, too. Because I, I think it's, I, I, you know, I'm not gonna make any promises now, because Ed would, would shoot me, but I mean, I think that that I think we're gonna be okay in the end, because I've seen these numbers increase. We were not serving, you know, seven hundred kids across this SU, you know, back uh, six weeks ago. So Scott, you had your hand up again, sorry.
Okay, I, so, the point I was gonna make or try to make was that the uh, I'm intrigued by the uh, numbers aspect of this, and I don't know if that's something that we have to um, vote on as a board or not, but, you know, increasing numbers to try to get more reimbursement seems to be pretty straightforward. But if in fact we are operating in a summer meals-like mechanism now, or if that's what it is, I just wanted to hear that clearly. A, and B, you know, because of the nature of this pandemic, and and who is at home now. So we've got uh, hi, uh, excuse me, college kids at home that may still be eighteen. We have high schoolers at home that are presumably eighteen. And there may even be cousins um, that are in Vermont right now, or people that at second homes. And so as broad as we can, in my mind, as broad as we can message this, places like the listserv, as opposed to the uh, in-school district uh, email lists, things like that, that get, that may scoop in a few more customers for Craig.
Yeah, good point.
I did hit the listserv once. We can hit it again now that we're in the new swing.
Yeah, that wouldn't hurt. That probably wouldn't.
Hurt the last time. We only got four responses on the listserv.
I was thinking you could kind of do a regular, every other week reminder, even if it's.
Yeah.
You know.
You can post, you can post the menu for the week.
Yeah.
You know, just put the menu up on the listserv.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
I'm happy to do it.
I think Craig needs a good number. I'm just, I, I'm worried that if we put the list menu up, that we might end up with fifty extra people and not enough food. And and so I kind of.
I don't know that either.
I don't know how to do that logistically.
Nikki, that survey was, we needed more information. I can't, I can't remember what was missing, but something, either the kids' names, or we had their address and the number of kids, but we didn't know what were. So if we could, so if we could add that to that, um, that would, that would be helpful.
Christine, Linda has a list, right, of all the Heartland kids who go to other high schools, right? Have you reached out to them specifically, or no?
Not specific, not, not individually, no.
Okay. I just wonder, you know, Linda knows everybody, right? And Linda knows, I mean, a lot of them are at Hartford, I, I get. But I mean, I think we could grab that list and, and maybe do, do some sort of a, you know, yeah, I'd be glad to help you with that. I don't, you know, we could do, you know.
We can figure that out.
We can talk about that. And I, and I'll say the same thing to Jean, because I know she has reached out to some of those high school kids. With her, you know, it's either Springfield or Windsor. And quite frankly, recently, it's been mostly Windsor. So there aren't that many. But I mean, I think, you know, there's probably over a hundred high school kids out there somewhere, right, that, that, who knows if they're eating or not.
Yeah.
I had a question for Craig, um, or Beth. Does this also include um, the, our preschool population?
It can.
Cool age.
Cool age, yeah.
Yeah, basically birthday, teen is summer meals, so.
Yeah, they can, they can.
Could the co-op nursery school and Four Corners Child Center send something out?
Yes, yeah.
To get those kids?
Are those, they're not open right now, right?
Uh, no.
Four Corners.
They could get the word out, though. You're right.
I, I thought Val reopened Four Corners.
Maybe she did.
Oh, if she did, then we could be potentially dropping meals off there even.
I'll find her. I, I, I thought I heard that, but I'll find out.
My neighbor's on the board of um, the preschool, so I can reach out to her and see what she thinks of that idea.
But at least she's got the, she's got the emails of her parents, so she could easily get that out there. And uh, yeah, that would be, I, I think we can just continue to advertise this, uh, and I agree with Craig, too. I think we should follow up on um, on providing, you know, again, we want to go slow, uh, which is unusual to hear from me, but, but I mean, I think you know, we're, we're getting calls from, you know, potentially people in motels and nursing homes, and, you know, I, I, I think this there's a lot of different places this could go in the next year or two. And I think we should keep an open mind about that, and knowing, you know, that that's sort of building up that program.
I'm wondering if we might be able to get a deal on packaging from companies in this situation, just because um, you know, they wanted the good marketing for them to get more business. And two, you know, a lot of the educational resources out there have become free or at a reduced price. And I'm wondering if any meal packaging places have thought of that as like an advertising thing for them to make some more money right now. And if we can get, I don't know, if we could take that angle, we might get some discounted packaging prices.
That's, that's a good idea.
Meal packaging right now is in high demand.
Never mind.
So, I'm working with, so Swish, White River, those guys have been treating us really well. Oliver Packaging, the, the company that we just hooked up with, trying to keep up as much as possible. I mean, I think, I just talked with Kittredge, I'm, I'm utilizing every resource that I have um, and can think outside the box to try to get the best quality or best, you know, value. Um, it's just right now, everybody, I think food producers wish they had such a demand as um, packaging companies, but um, Angie, yeah, but that's your, that can be your side gig. Um, so.
Yeah, we'll put Angie on that.
We're working, I mean, we're working on it. It's just, the more that we can buy in bulk also, the better. It's like, so like Oliver Packaging, if we can buy thirty-two cases of their product, they'll give us a thirty or forty dollar discount per case. It's just a big, I was kind of conservative behind that, because it's just a big number at thirty-five cases. So, you know, I'm trying to kind of keep it re, you know, conservative, and, and get like eight to ten cases at a time. So it just doesn't seem so big. But those are, you know, we can, we can look at that option also, buying in bulk.
All, like going through the summer even, it sounds like we're gonna burn through that quickly.
Yeah, we are.
So.
Hey Craig, one last question from me. How, how much came, how much came back today on those buses? Did, did we have much? Oh, that's not bad.
Eighteen, and fifteen from, oh, uh, twelve from Heartland, five, uh, six from Weathersfield.
Wow, okay, that's not bad.
And none from Windsor. So Windsor wanted, you know, like, oh, yeah.
And is that basically throwaway? We can't reuse that at all?
No, actually, we uh, disassembled them and brought them down to the church in Windsor.
Nice.
And we're gonna reserve them. So we kept the milk and the juice and the, and all of those, we're counting those anyways. I mean, we can count those, so there was no loss.
Great. That's perfect.
One last thing from me. I just, without the support from David and all you guys, um, we're nothing. So I really do appreciate all your support and um, continued cheerleading, because we need it as much as anybody right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sitting here earlier, thinking, oh my gosh, he just started serving meals in August. What a crazy six and seven months this has been.
It's nuts, literally nuts.
It's fun. It's been good. It's been great.
Awesome.
Part, partway through the week. Thanks, Craig.
See you guys.
Well done, Craig.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, so David and Christine, do you guys have other COVID-nineteen updates you want to give?
Uh, we could quick, quickly summarize our, our continuity of learning, just briefly.
Angie's on the phone, too, so, yeah.
She's in the lead on that, so maybe she wants to, do you want to?
Do you, do you want to talk just about the ba, basics? Most of it came out in my letter to parents and to staff. I think the biggest question right now, and we're gonna tackle it a little bit tomorrow morning, there's still a little bit confusion around how this work is gonna be assessed. And, and, you know, because we've, we've got one end of the, one end of the spectrum where certain teachers have told certain kids, you know, none of this counts, don't worry about it, and we, we, we'll get on top of that, because that's just misunderstandings and miscommunication. And then you've got people on the other side saying, if you don't do this work, you're gonna stay back, and, or you're gonna go to summer school. And so you got these two extremes out there, very small numbers, but those are the things that parents pick up on. And so we've got to get a unified message out one more time to parents and kids about the fact that you know, you, you know, we really want you to do this work. We don't want any regression. We want kids to continue to make progress. Uh, I know teachers are putting out really, really good uh, um, uh, projects and um, assignments that, you know, I think are probably more creative than when we were sitting in in, in rows, in classrooms, you know, which is, which is exactly what we wanted. But it's, it's gonna take a little while to get that unified message out to staff. And I'll tell you, the thing about staff and with parents, parents. and with parents, parents believe their, their teachers, right? I mean, and the kids believe their teachers. Whatever the teacher says is, it's the way it is. And so we've just got to work hard and we'll figure, we'll work on this tomorrow morning. We have an administrative team meeting. But I did get some feedback today. I got one email this morning, you know, uh, about, you know, hey, my teacher just told my sophomore son that none of this work counts and that, and, and I, I don't know, you know, where that came from, uh, but I, I understand that people might have misinterpreted stuff that we said, but I think the assessment is a tough piece. Um, but that said, Angie, do you want to talk a little bit about what, what we're doing with the plan? Is Angie still with us?
Angie, we can't hear you.
She might be on mute or sometimes she has a little microphone problem.
I think you might be muted.
She's not muted.
Uh, let me see. No, Angie's not muted.
Oh, we can't hear you, Angie. Try again. Refresh your page maybe.
It's my microphone.
Yeah, she's had microphone issues.
You're back.
Now we got you.
Nope.
We had you.
Uh-oh.
Nope. You.
Angie, I would leave the meeting and then try to come back.
I think the other solution is to mute yourself and call in.
I'm here now.
Ah, you got, we got you. We got you.
It's just a setting and I forget. And when I move out, so I have, um, I, I take Zoom calls and another, a new one to me last week was called Microsoft Teams. And so my computer doesn't like me going to the different flat platforms. So whenever I come back from one of those, I have to reset my mic so it knows which one, which mic, which there's only one mic, so who knows? Um, I just wanted to say that we're, we're eagerly awaiting feedback from the Agency of Education. First of all, they sent us a letter last Monday, a week ago Monday, saying they hadn't received our plan, which was, they had totally received our plan and sent us confirmation. And then, and now we haven't heard back from them. And I've heard that other systems have gotten, you know, gotten their responses much quicker. So I don't know what that means. Um, one of, I, I think one of the things that we've done, which I'd be, I, I'll be interested to see if other supervisory unions thought about it the same way we did, was we asked our teachers to do a continuity of learning plan in each building, like the teacher teams, um, just so that there can be some consistency across teams and that we can see that work. Um, we can see what that looks like. And I think that it'll be an interesting thing for, as an administrative team, to look at that across the supervisory union at some point, probably after this is all over, um, to see where we are, where we were consistent and where we weren't, to help inform what we could do to, um, provide more consistency across the supervisory union. I'm hoping that we're more consistent than we're not, but, um, I would anticipate some differences. Uh, so mo, a lot of those have come in. I haven't actually gone through and checked off to see that I've gotten those from everybody, but a lot of them are coming in. We have not given staff a deadline on that, so that'll probably come out tomorrow. And, um, I think clarity around the amount of time that students spend in academic pursuit, um, has been interesting. And the guidelines we followed were on, I think, on the conservative end. Um, and the, then the agency came out with some that were a little bit more lofty. Um, I, I still stand by the, the academic times that we suggested. I think two to two and a half hours for seniors, I mean, for high schoolers. And then, um, you know, up an hour, up to an hour for kindergarteners and then, so anywhere between an hour and um, two and a half hours a day, depending on the grade level. Um, so we still have a few things to work out, but I think overall, uh, we're, we're going to be ready to, to present more to the, to the parents, although David's letter that he wrote really did a nice job of, of, uh, what do you call it? Summarizing the key points that they need to be aware of. That's all.
Angie, how different was what the Agency of Education came out with, uh, in terms of times compared to what we posted?
Um, about ninety minutes more on the upper end.
On the upper end, but not like, what about near R K eight kind of?
Um, maybe thirty minutes more.
Okay, so not, not massive, but.
I think.
No, but I mean,
Yeah, I think.
Not at all in guide, in the resources that they gave us, but the information that I suggested in our continuity of learning plan came right from one of the resources that the agency had listed.
There.
Sounds, okay.
We also get a lot of input from our parents, um, and recognizing, you know, there are kind of two ends. Some parents were, were really, really overwhelmed in the beginning with the amount of work and some parents, of course, want more. So we're trying to balance that and provide options for kids that want those extensions, but not, um, require them for all families, um, and recognizing that families are in different situations and they're doing the best they can. And I have to say, I'm, uh, wowed every day by, um, the Heartland community. Stepping up, not complaining. I mean, a few complaints, but mostly really supportive. And the teachers as well, they've just made it happen. So.
Yeah, and I noticed that in terms of kind of balancing that load there, um, a lot of what teachers are posting are, are here's the minimum requirements. Here's, you know, you, what you have to do throughout the week. And then here's extra. If you feel like you want to jump on that, but they're making it much more clear, I feel like now, that this is, this is additional. If you have time, if you happen to need something to do, great. If not, it's not a big deal. So I, I hope that that's helped families too.
I know, um, we met with the K two pod today. Um, they're having first and kindergarten's kind of just getting, getting on board a little bit more. Um, but first and second have moved to CSO, the CSO platform, which is amazing, and they're having great success. They reported that the kids are doing, uh, pretty much all the work, including, you know, options. Many kids are doing that. So that was good. We also had, um, Brittany coordinated with Julie Godette from, um, Special, um, oh gosh, I always get this wrong.
Special Investigations Unit.
Um, so we had DCF with CRS and Julie at our meeting today, just talking about mandatory reporting in this, um, time of teachers in homes with children and, and, um, how to go about that. And, you know, kids aren't having the opportunity like they would at school to report something because parents, parents are there. And, um, so it's complicated stuff, but they're a great resource and they're going to come to all our, um, pod meetings this week to share information and answer questions. So.
And they developed a PowerPoint presentation that we shared out with everybody that had a lot of really great information about, um, oh, my dogs just came in here. So that, but really good information about, um, how to pick up on kind of abuse, possible abuse. Chase, you need to leave. Okay, possible abuse situations that might be happening, um, and how to pick up on those in this kind of weird time, how to, you know, not to pry, you know, trying to like maintain a little bit of a balance, but also making sure that you're seeing things in a little bit of a different way than we used to.
And they did clarify. I know the Advent team had questions because kids are, um, considered in school. So truancy is a tricky issue right now.
Right.
Um, but they did, they did say that they would like us to report, um, if, and, and our plan is if a kid doesn't show up, obviously we're trying to make connection and we're keeping track in multiple spreadsheets of, of kids. But if, if I can't get ahold of or, um, it ratchets up the, the chain, um, a, a student or a parent, after three weeks, we're going to report to DCF and, and not in a punitive way, just in a way like concerned about this child. Um, not that it would open an investigation, but, um, they talked about just coordinating agency, wraparound and support families. So, um, if it's a kid with a, with an open those, um, time limits are, are much less. So if we don't hear from a student in a week and a half, if they're an open a case through DCF, then we're going to report sooner. So.
I just, along those lines, Christine, I just saw a question from Sarah. I think it's an important question. You know, what have the attendance stats been like, right? I think that that's, that's important. Um, one of the things that, you know, the agency in this remote environment, I think I've said this before, uh, you know, you start from the premise that everybody is present, right? Because nobody's left the state. Nobody's going cross-country. Nobody's out of the country. Um, so, uh, you know, the premise is everybody's there, but they still want that daily check-in. And we've been doing that daily check-in. But what I'm hearing from the building principals and the pods that I'm sitting in on, I mean, it's really, again, uh, quite amazing that there really is, you know, generally, uh, a handful of, a handful of kids who, uh, and I, and I don't know, you met, uh, today, Christine, but would you agree it's really not a, a ton of kids? I mean, you know, I, I.
I, I would say our intensive meetings on Friday, we talk about, about, about twenty kids.
About twenty?
We've been talking about twenty, you know, they're repeating. The kids are repeating, but, um.
It's the same kids.
Yeah, it's pretty much the same kids, I would say.
Um, but there's only like one or two, I would say, that we, that know, there's no contact, like hasn't happened yet for whatever reason. And we're working on it and we're trying, um, like one or two of, you know, two hundred and eighty or six to eighty-six, you know, um, the rest are, the rest of those twenty have been students of concern, um, meaning they may have been seen here or there, but not really doing anything or participating. I just saw Scott's question about the SRO, um.
Yeah, we, we do have, um, yeah, we do have, um, you know, Paul and, and, and we'll use him accordingly. It's, it's just, it's a complicated situation, sending an SRO in, you know, a police officer in uniform to a, to a household. Um, it's just, it's, families are already overwhelmed and in, you know, very anxious state. So we're, we're carefully using that resource. Um, yeah.
We'll come in more when we get to the point of like three weeks out and we still, and we've, we've tried contacting, we've sent letters, we've called and there's still nothing, um, that we, that we might look into that. Because then I think after three weeks of zero contact, that's, that's really, yeah, especially depending on the family, like Christine said.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I want to get back just quickly to the continuity of learning plan and then, and the hours that were expected. I, I, I think what we've said to our staff and, and to the parents to some degree, it's a work in progress. So we may find that we'll be able to increase at the K eight level and we'll be able to increase at the high school level. I think we just wanted to take the first week or two and just, you know, we're going to be in this for the long haul. We're going, you know, into June with this. And so it's just what we have to remember is that for every two hours of work, say at the high school level, or two and a half hours of work at the high school level for the core content areas, you've got about thirty percent of those kids who are also receiving some level of, uh, you know, PT or SLP work or, or one-on-one work with a tutor or, you know, so their day, their day starts to fill up, uh, pretty, pretty quickly. They've got these little, you know, enrichment, uh, assignments from their Unified Art teachers. And yeah, so it's, I think we're just going to have to feel it out and get a sense of what, and we may get some feedback from the state, but we haven't, you know, we haven't put enough time into the plan. So we'll, we'll, we'll adjust when we get that feedback. They must be going crazy there now though, because they just got two hundred and sixty-four of these twenty-four page plans. So I, I don't know who's reading through those. I'm just glad it's not me.
I have a question. Are we? Wait, are we waiting for input from A O E on how we're going to um, measure or assess? And what does assessment look like?
Yeah, I mean, starting today, theoretically, teachers were supposed to go back to their, their one, two, three, four rubric in standards-based assessment. Um, the, the, and I assume that's what you meant, Colleen, right? You're not talking about any kind of standardized test or statewide test.
I had that in mind as well. Are we, we're not doing standard? Is that still true that there'll be no standardized test?
Yeah, not, not this year. No, no, no effect this year. We also.
You had talked, we had talked a little bit about pass fail.
Right.
Versus, um,
Right.
I always forget the word, versus our one, two, three, four.
Versus a, yeah, a grade or a, or a qualitative or quantitative grade. Yeah. Well, the direction we're getting from the A O E is to, especially at the middle and high school levels, but they're pretty much saying pre-K to twelve, you know, you, you, uh, you know, the past fail gets a little tricky, that you should probably stay with what the kids know, what the parents know. We can upload that in, into our student information system, you know, Power School can read all of that. Uh, it gets really tricky at the high school level because the past fail doesn't translate well into a quantitative EPA or, or, or a, a, a transcripted, you know, we, we've got this complicated formula behind the Power School, uh, wall that takes these one, two, three, fours and actually turns into a, a numerical, transcribed.
Yeah, the parents would kill you.
Yeah, so that, that helps us, you know, because, you know, some colleges don't care anymore, but, but some colleges do. So we wanted to make sure that we, we did that. So past fail would be, would be tricky there.
I wanted to, I just wanted to, um, tell, uh, speak a little bit about the process and the conversation that we had because, um, we were also thinking that the Power School, what's in Power School is a source of data for us. And if it's skewed with a pass fail or a one, three, which is how we'd have to do it, um, we don't get a full picture of how students performed over this time. And there's two things the state wanted us to make, ensure that we were, uh, whatever we did was equitable and whatever we did, did no harm. So we talked about what would be the consequences of students who were totally disengaged for whatever reason. Um, and it, having that data in Power School is going to help us develop a plan for them when we come back to school in session in the fall. For the seniors, it's, um, uh, Tiffany was writing out, uh, her thoughts about how that would look for a high school senior. But at the high school level, for kids that didn't, um, do, do work or were not engaged in a class, they, if they received an incomplete, they would, there would be a plan in place for them the following term for them to do that work. And so we're fleshing that out just to, um, determine what that would look like, particularly in grades seven and up.
So part of me, I like, this whole assessment thing is just makes me so uncomfortable in the sense of like, I feel like it's just assessing, you know, how privileged you are, because it's, it's like, how, how can we assess this situation? And, and everyone's different. How they, and I know it's like coming down from the state and we can't do much. Um, but it's that whole thing of like, I am so highly privileged. Both my husband and I are home. We are sitting by our students. We have college degrees and, you know, hell, I was, I'm a certified teacher. Like, we can pull this off. And, um, but there are so many families that just cannot. And so why, like, then we're just assessing how privileged they are to, you know, and access good internet or, you know, and just even have two parents. Like, that's so huge. And how do we deal with that?
Yeah, I think that's so true, Beth. That's, I mean, you couldn't say it any, any better than that. I think that's really, what are we assessing, right? Are we assessing parental support or are we assessing, you know, a student's ability to perform a task? And I, I think that's, we've got to keep that central uh, to, to, to this conversation. I know the superintendents are working at the state level to try to, you know, not that the state doesn't see it. They, they get, they get that piece, but, uh, I, I think we have to keep it in mind constantly, uh, that that's, that's really what, what we're assessing. You, you, you said it perfectly, which is why we kind of, you know, we backed off a little on the minutes, you know, we ju, and then if a parent or a family wants some enrichment activity, we've got that. We've got kids that are taking instrument lessons. And we've got kids that are, that are drawing and painting with our art teachers in private one-on-one lessons. I mean, that's great, right? If you want that and you've got a kid who's talented in that area, then, then, you know, reach out. And I think I'm going to talk more about that in my next letter home to parents, that we're willing to do whatever the parent wants to do, right? I think because that's, that's.
Yeah, I'm more worried, I mean, I just know I'm sitting next to Silas, my first grader. Nothing happens if I'm not sitting next to him, you know, like, and so, and I have a feeling many first graders are this way. And so it's just that whole thing of like, how many parents are just.
Seven graders.
Yes, I was going to say, my nine-year-old knows much better. And, uh, so yeah, it's just how do you, you balance that? And that, it just makes me, it makes me so sad too of like, oh my God, these kids are, you know, they're missing so much potentially. And there's just so much potential neglect happening and, um, yet I'm stuck here in my home and can't do a damn thing about it. happening, and, um, yet I'm stuck here in my home and can't do a damn thing about it.
Well, some of what we are doing, Beth, just to, and you're absolutely right, um, but we, um, part of the documentation that we are keeping, we are identifying those kids and assigning support staff members to set up one-on-one meetings with those kids. Um, it's not perfect, because some kids still don't show up, but there are kids taking advantage of working, um, it's not a parent sitting next to the child, but it's a, a, a support staff member sitting like this, with kids helping them with their work. Um, so we're, we're trying to address that in, in the ways that we can.
And for some of the older teams where pairs are doing that, they're setting up, um, they're helping the students set up schedules and, you know, organize, um, you know, where are all the links that I need to be able to access all the meetings? And, you know, what does it look like? And that seems to have helped, I mean, it, it really took our, um, I don't know, Christine, you can speak to this too, but our intensive meeting, um, kids went down quite a bit. I mean, we got to take a lot of kids off that list, um, from the beginning, because those supports really worked, which was great.
That's great, yeah. But, um-
So I just, I wanna, I wanna make a couple comments, sorry. Do you need to finish that thought first, Christine?
No, I was just, I was just saying, part of our, um, rationale for collecting the data and grading is really to give the sense of what we need to do to support these kids when they come back. And we reckon it's going to be a huge disparity, um, just, we're, we're gonna have to figure out how to deal with. So, go ahead, Angie.
So, yeah, so I just, um, first of all, Sarah, I think you put the comment in about her, what Hanover's doing, pass, no, uh, no credit, or credit, credit plus. They're also a, um, 100-point scale, they're, they do traditional grading. So it's sort of apples and footballs. Um, and the other thing is that when the state first came out with the continuity of learning plan, they had, um, curriculum and a, and assessment in there as one of the areas, and they changed that to, well, it was instruction and assessment. They changed that to instruction and feedback. So I think we have to be thinking about it in terms of feedback. So if a student has turned in an assignment, um, the assessed piece is, is the feedback that the teacher would provide back to the kid. This is what, what is going, this is what you're doing well, this is what you still need to work on. It's a very different way of looking at feedback than giving the kids a test. Um, and I don't know how many, how many staff will feel comfortable giving students something like a, a short answer test in this situation, because there's, there's no guarantee that the kid will have been the one doing the work, or the kid will have done the work independently. So I think teachers are going to be really creative in terms of how they, um, what evidence they're looking at for what, um, for the learning. And, and it's, it's more than just a, a test.
And some of what we heard today, just in the K2 meeting, was, um, they're going more off of what they're, what they're getting from the student in the one-to-one sessions or in the small group sessions, versus assessing the, um, the con- the, you know, content, the completed content that's coming back.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, talking with the student through what they're doing and, and what that looks like versus, um, you know, trying to take out that whole who's doing the work situation.
Right, that makes sense.
Okay, you mean, we can't do Nicola's homework?
You're more than welcome to give it a whirl. You go for it.
Do, I do have a que- do we have, do you have any concerns about, um, not being equitable? I mean, even across the state, I know there's so many school systems outside of Vermont that are choosing not to do assessments or count this work, um, because they can't provide equal services to everyone. And I, I don't really, I don't have a follow-up to that, I guess, just, is there any reason to worry about? I don't see how you can be equal across the board, so-
Right, I, I would think that, so when we've, I, I just don't, I think you keep the equity lens at the forefront, and you'd be think, and be thinking about how, because it's, it's gonna happen, we can't control what's happening in the homes of our students. And we think about what we can control. We can control that we're advising teachers, that first thing that they're doing is making that connection with the kid, and the social, emotional wellbeing of that child, that's, that's our message in our continuity of learning plan, that that's the most important thing we're doing at this time. And the learning is also important, but not as important. So if we're really looking at the whole child and we need to collect that data in order to be able to support that child when we come back into session in the fall, um, so I don't think you can ignore it, and I don't think anybody is ignoring it, or, or, uh, that's not the way you said it. I don't think, you cannot worry about it, because we should all be worried about it. It's, it's just, we have families that come from all different places, right?
There's not, yeah. We have limits to what we can do, that's-
Right.
Thanks.
Well, to keep us moving, I think we've got a pretty good update, um-
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, and Christine and David and Brittany, um, and Angie, it, if you guys need us, we can come together, and I, I feel like you guys dealt with a whole, like, looking back at the minutes of March 16th, like, usually I don't feel like any time has passed between meetings, and that meeting seemed like an eternity ago, and you guys have done a crap load of work in the meantime. Um, mind-boggling amount of work, actually, because we were still in session when we last had our meeting.
It's amazing. And teachers, teachers too, please pass along, um, you know, my, my thanks to the teachers who just, I can't imagine the number of hours that they've spent, you know, just figuring out the Google Classroom and creating assignments in a completely new way. Um, so thank you, thank you to all of you.
Yeah, what might be moot is, um, so I know we do, of course, have some teachers that are pretty stressed out, I mean, like, everybody is, you know? Um, but maybe it would be cool if you guys sent something to them, a video message or something, just super quick, hey, you know, we're thinking of you guys, and, you know, we know you're working hard, kind of thing, because I know they, they know we're thinking of them, but, um, it might be just a nice, some sort of pick-me-up, you know?
Yep, great idea.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
We're, we're getting our kids into writing letters again during this time to family members and things like that. Is there a way to write to teachers, like, if, like, a physical letter?
Yeah, we have their addresses, and, um-
So if I just send it to the school and then you'll send it to their home?
Or I can just give you the address. I've, I've asked them permission to share addresses.
Okay, that'd be great, okay.
Everybody said no, so I think I'm, I'm good to go.
Yeah, I was just thinking, the, the picture that the teachers and, and admin and staff did with holding the, the letters up, maybe we could do one of those, too, um, that we could send out to teachers or post. Yeah, I mean, that was so fantastic, maybe we could do something like that, um, and write letters, you know?
They would, they would love that. They are, I will say, um, they are working incredibly hard. Um, I would say the, the, the plus in this is they've, um, strengthened their team, team, um, teamwork together, they really are figuring things out. The middle school team today sent me this incredible graphic for, and it may have gone out this afternoon, they were putting final touches on it today, just like a guide to the week, to help, um, families and kids stay on track, know what's expected. I mean, it was, I, actually, I'll share it with you, because I was, I was just, they're really coming together, um, as, as teams, which is really nice to see, supporting each other. So, um, that's, they would appreciate some positive encouragement, for sure.
The other thing we're working on getting rolling while, um, Christine's sending that out is, um, some more PBIS stuff, just, uh, you know, it took me a while to fi- wrap my head around how we were gonna, um, keep the expectations rolling and keep, um, you know, thinking about character trait of the month and all that stuff. So I started making videos, or I developed a visual for expectation, primarily for K through 5, but then, uh, we did a rubric for the rest. Um, but I took that visual and then I created, um, video assemblies, if you will, with, uh, the PowerPoint presentations that we normally do. Um, and I sent that out to teachers today, at least the first, I think I did the first three parts of it, and there'll be four parts total. So we're trying to get that stuff rolling, too, for some, not to overwhelm families with more stuff, but at the same time, something fun, that's something we typically do at school, anyway.
That's fantastic. Christine, you got it yet?
Yeah, I got it, I just found it. I, I have so many, so many drives, so, okay, let me share it. Yeah, it's, it's really, they've, they've done a really nice job. Um, not Sarah, Sarah. Taylor. Oops. You guys all have two emails up.
Can you just click on the present now?
Uh, yep, but I'm, I'm on two computers, so let me, yes.
Oh, okay, never mind.
No, no, faster, because I know right where it is, if I can do that. Uh, you can go to the next thing, Nikki, while I find it, go for it.
Actually, that's a good idea. Um, so, uh, so we had, um, and this will come up again in the resignations, although it's been removed from this agenda. Um, the treasurer of, um, our, our school treasurer, um, sent a letter of resignation, um, to me and David and David Ormston. Um, and she is the joint treasurer for, um, for both the town and the school. And in digging into the regs, um, David Baker and David Ormston have, um, figured out that it needs to be the same person, pretty much, um, because they need to be moving money between the two accounts, this, um, town and the school. Um, and so we were concerned, um, but we have talked to her, um, pretty extensively, Dave Ormston, um, Dr. Baker and I, uh, all got together and tried to see, um, what changes could be made, because it really was a position, it was a situation where she wasn't feeling comfortable, um, with everything being at the SU level and not feeling like, um, she was part of the picture, which is understanding, and also a bit of, um, some feeling that the former, um, school-town treasurer, um, had some really intense, uh, ways of dealing with things, and, um, not, nobody can replicate the ways that she dealt with stuff. And so I think that there was some feeling of not being as successful, because nobody can figure out how the previous treasurer did anything. Um, so we've had a lot of discussions, um, we're gonna, we're gonna try it again. Um, so she, I don't know if she's formally withdrawn her resignation, but she's gonna keep trying. Um, we're gonna work with the, um, she's gonna work with the SU, um, to figure out, I'll keep going for a second, um, she'll, she's gonna keep, she's gonna work with the SU, um, financial office to find an ally that she can really, um, trust with what's going on financially, um, and we're gonna, we're gonna stay the course for a little bit. So fingers crossed that this all works, um, and I think that, I think that her, um, resignation sent up a bit of a red flag that, that we just needed to be a little bit, um, there just needed to be more communication. And so I think that, that it's opened up that communication pathway. David, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, I was just gonna say, I think it was really great, Nikki, that you reached out also, and David did again, and, uh, you know, Ed seemed to, you know, we, he had conferenced in with us, and, you know, he seemed like he really wanted to accommodate. I think, I think we've got enough people in that business office where we can find a user-friendly face in that office. I keep going back to Deanna, because Deanna is very organized and very, uh, you know, she's a, she's sort of a teacher at heart, she likes teaching people things, you know? Um, so I, I, I think we can, I, you know, I, I think when we're ready, we can get her hooked up with the right person to, to make this work, and I'm glad we didn't just give up on it. I'm glad we kept, we kept going with it.
Yeah, and it, it sounds like, it sounds like she's doing better. Um, so, I, I'm hoping that we're good. So we'll turn back to you, Christine, I think, unless there's any other comments on that.
Yeah, I just had, I needed to turn my mic on, sorry. You did, now you can hear me. So as an aside, because I'm the warrant signer, I'll just tell you how it's working. So, um, Gail McCoy is emailing me the warrant, but of course, mine is the entire stack of, um, receipts and invoices. And if I see something funny, which I haven't yet, I ask, so I haven't done that yet, but I would ask her to, and then I put an electronic signature on the front page of the warrant and, uh, email it back to her. And that represents that I've looked at it, and the truth is that I've looked at the top pages. So I don't see things going past that, that look abnormal to past months, but the truth is I'm not going through every single page like I was. And, uh, and I did hear from Gail that early on that she was going to be somehow accomplishing what the Heartland Treasurer was looking at, um, just so there wouldn't have to be so much back and forth. Um, I hope that they can figure that out, so that everyone is more comfortable with their role.
I think it was that conversation that spurred, um, I, I, there's been challenges all along, there's definitely, um, to, to bring it to the bigger picture, what, um, I think with David and David, um, helped me to understand was that the, the state has not caught up with the legislation that they've written. And so the town treasurer position really doesn't match what the state has mandated that we do at the SU level. And so these poor town treasurers and school treasurers, um, have no control and aren't in the loop, um, as far as what's happening. And then on top of that, we've moved to, um, an electronic financial system that even our financial crew can't figure out. Um, and so then to ask, uh, you know, almost volunteer position to understand a system that our financial crews can't even figure out, um, is a, it's a big ask. And so we really, all of us kind of came down to the idea that, that this is really, we, we just need to find a way to meet the existing regulation, um, the way that they're written now, and that this position, and this is not ideal for anyone, and it, it actually is not written well for anyone. So I, I think that we kind of got there a little bit.
You know, the, the other thing that's interesting along those lines, Nikki, um, and then Christine, you can, you can carry on, but, um, I think that's a really important point about how the statute, the statutes have not kept up with a lot of this centralization. And one of the things we talked about, uh, at our meeting, and I've reached out now twice, uh, to legislators during this session, I think we've talked about this before at the board level, um, but we, we now, at the SU, have the biggest payroll of, of any of the entities in our supervisory union, and, uh, and consequently, the way the state money comes in, both in terms of, uh, assessment from the, well, assessments from the local districts, but then the other special ed state money, uh, you know, all of that reimbursement money, it only comes in three times a year. So what happens is, you can end up in a real cash flow crunch, because you have to make payroll. And what most districts do, like Ed did with the Heartland District, uh, not too long ago, is you, you just open a line of credit, right? So that you can, you can keep paying people, and then at the end, when that state check comes in, you pay the state back. But right now, the statute doesn't allow supervisory unions to borrow money. You can't borrow money a- a- at that level, you can't own property, um, you can only lease property for up to three years. There's a lot of restrictions that aren't consistent with the kind of centralization they've required of us at, uh, at the supervisory union level. So I think it's, 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 it's complicated, and I think, uh, David was great in listening and, and helping us kind of work through this. And, and I think in the end, uh, I think we can, I think we can bring her along with me starting to feel more, he just doesn't know any of this stuff. So all of a sudden, Ed will call and ask for a, a prepayment on, on the Heartland Assessment for a half a million dollars, and I'll tell you, if I was the treasurer, I'd be sitting there saying, and, and what, what do you need that half a million dollars for? All right, it, it gets complicated. So I think we just need to walk her through the steps, and she'll be fine.
I, I have one more point to make, it's, I, I was, I'm glad that David just reminded me about this. So quickly, it was just a couple meetings ago that we, um, at this board okayed, um, I'm not sure exactly what we called it, but we were, gave, um, David and Ed the authority to borrow short-term from the Heartland, uh, uh, fund for, for building projects, what's it called? fund for for building projects. What's it called? Capital Reserve.
Capital Reserve, yeah.
Yeah, remember? Um, I think we were in the library when we did that.
Now, that was, that was the, um, that was to borrow, that was to open up a line of credit.
Was that a town meeting, Nikki?
Actually happens at town meeting.
Okay, we did it at town meeting then.
Yeah. Yeah, that might have been a year ago, yeah.
No, it was a town meeting. Nikki's right. And so that, that made the, one of our community members stood up and questioned that. And so I just think, I just wanted to make, get this, to say this out loud. And um to make myself feel better, uh, that we all continue to be uh observing for that because with, at some point tonight, we may talk about the dire uh position of education funding in Vermont in the next two years. And, you know, we don't want to be um overdoing that short-term borrowing uh because we feel like we're pressured to. So I think that's just something that we should all look at ongoing.
And to go back to that, my understanding of the short-term borrowing was just to meet payroll and then we pay it back. Um, so it's a, it, it's a stopgap because payroll has to happen for two weeks. Um, and we don't always have money in the bank on the exact day that payroll happens. So, but I don't, as far as I understand, we're not actually borrowing money from that on any other type of basis. Because we haven't approved that. Okay, Christine, why don't you show us what? It looks cool.
Is, is my screen presenting right now?
Yes.
Yeah, it is. It is. Yeah. What, what, what are you presenting? Remind me again?
Uh, the middle school worked uh together last week to come up with um a collaborative um plan for students. Uh, some of the, some of the issues we were having were lots of different assignments in different places from different people and teachers not recognizing how much work each individual middle school um content teacher was assigning. So they worked together to come up with a plan. They created a graphic, which is, I don't think they went out, it went out yet because there is a little, a misspelling that um they were gonna fix today. But um, I, I just wanted to show you because it just, to me, it was just a sign that they are working together somehow virtually to create uh efficient ways for, you know, educating their kiddos, making sure the kids have their needs met, know where to go for information. And so I was just pleased with their efforts. And I think it'll be, I think it'll be helpful for students to have an outline of where everything is and what the expectations are by day. So that.
That looks great, Christine. Yeah.
I need one of those for my own work.
We got ours and it got two thumbs up from the household. We just all went over it as a family.
Oh, you got it. Okay. Hopefully they fixed that.
Nice, yeah. Yeah, you should bring that uh to the team meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, they did a really nice job, so.
That's a nice layout. That's a really nice layout.
Took a lot of collaborating ti- times and shifting things around so that they weren't um um asking too much of kids. I mean, they really had to work together to make a plan. So just kudos to them.
Yeah, pass it along to the middle school team that, that we, I'm jealous.
Well, I know the, the grade level, grade alike teachers are working together as well um to come up with plans, which is, which is super helpful. But this, this was a larger collaboration, lots of.
Yeah, it's a really cool.
Yeah.
It's a cool demonstration.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna keep us moving. Um, so we are now on to um item C, which is a list of resignations, some of which make me very sad.
I, I. Yeah, I'll go through them and I shared, um, I got one today from um Teresa. So I shared it with you, David. I don't know if you um got that just before the meeting started. Okay.
And I said that whenever you send those, don't be afraid to copy Tina in HR because Tina's the one that keeps them in the folder and then, yeah, but we, I got it.
Okay, so um we had um a resignation from Suzanne Wood and um that was based on the increase in the music position and her situation. So I, do you have to approve these one at a time or all together? Or do you, don't you have to accept these?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to. I think we can do it all.
You can do it as a group, yeah.
One from Angie Carpenter Henderson. She um was somewhat recruited by Norwich University to be a teacher of teachers. So she is going to move on to the next phase in her career. She's nervous but excited and she's definitely ready for, for the challenge. So although she has done an incredible job at Heartland and will be missed by everyone, um, we're happy for her because this is something that she, that she's really looking forward to do, to doing. Um, and she'll have a great impact on future teachers, which we'll all benefit from. So um, the one that came in tonight is Teresa Semantik. She is um going to retire um officially. I know she's gone to part-time and um she is, she made the decision um just about a week ago. She came to chat with me and um has decided it's time for her to retire and she's wrestled with it. She's been at Heartland, I think, uh, forty years. I mean, she's been there for a long time. She's a staple. She's been um, you know, in my experience with her willing to learn, upbeat, positive. The kids love her. She's like, she's the cheerleader at Heartland. So she will be missed, but um she, in her mind, is able to um wrestle with the decision because she can come in and volunteer. And her grand, one of her grandchildren will be in kindergarten next year. So she'll be back. She just won't be in the, in the same capacity. So those are the three. Um, we, did we do mics last time we met? I couldn't remember, Mike How? We did not. Scott's?
No.
So.
I don't, I don't think we did.
So Mike How has turned in his letter of resignation as well. Um, again, another long, longstanding um staff member at Heartland um loves the kids, loves, loves the school. And um it's just at that time where he's ready to, ready to be, ready to be retired. But um, you know, he may help us out if we need help. Um, he's our water testing guy. So if Jim feels like that's gonna be um something Mike can do, I think Mike's willing. And um, so those are the four that I have tonight. So I'll make a motion and.
Yeah. I just want to say that, like, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I kind of wonder if this list of people's total years in Heartland adds up to over a hundred years. Like, yeah, like the majority of these teachers have been here for a really long time.
Yeah.
So. And so. Okay, so are there any motions to accept the resignations of um Angie Carpenter Henderson, Teresa Semantik, Susan Wood and Mike How? Anybody motion?
I motion what you said.
Okay, I see Beth and then I'm gonna go with a Scott second.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, and so if there's no further discussion, we will um so we'll vote to accept the resignations of um those four individuals with regrets and uh wishing them the best. Um, the majority of them in their retirement and hopefully they'll come visit and be able to be in the building in a more playful way. So. Um, I'm just gonna go with the, everybody turn their mics off. Um, and we'll all say aye or nay and um, so I think everybody's got their mics off now. So all those in favor of accepting um the four retirements, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. So Christine, please respond to everybody that we really.
It's, it, we're in kind of a weird place because normally we will honor and celebrate retirements at the end of the year. So going with how to do that, to postpone it, but same thoughts about graduation, you know, I'm thinking about how we, how we move forward with that because the kids deserve something. Um, so more to come. Um, thinking about how to, I mean, we can do them virtually. Uh, it's just figuring out if that's what the kids want or we want to wait until we can get back together. So some digging to do, but um I want to share that we have been um interviewing for positions and I, I can share one um one um position that we filled actually this afternoon. If, if the board would like to hear about that, I'm happy to share.
Yeah, is it, uh, David, are we at a point where we can talk about the position in public session or should we wait till executive session?
No, no, I think you can talk about that in public session. That's fine.
Okay.
So um, we've been, we've been hiring for our part-time music position. I don't have an, I don't have an uh an update on that one yet. Um, but we did uh, we got a health position last week and we offered the position to Lacy Stever. I don't know if anybody knows her, but she is um a fairly new teacher. She has two years under her belt. She's from, oh God, I'm gonna forget now, uh, Fairleigh, Fairleigh, Vermont. So she's fairly local and she's moved back to Brownsville, actually.
She's in Brownsville now.
She's in Brownsville. She's really, really excited about um coming to Heartland. She had wonderful, wonderful, wonderful things um that people shared about her. Um, so we're excited.
And isn't she somehow connected to a former PE teacher from?
Her boyfriend's dad was the PE teacher at Heartland for many years. She shared, yeah.
I was just really wanted to say goodnight to Miss Bourne and Miss Preston.
Oh.
Good to see you. That's awesome.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So excited to see both your faces on the screen.
So um we'll accept the because we have to.
A motion.
Hiring. We'll just do that at the next meeting.
You could, you could do it tonight. It does, there's no need to wait. Up to you.
Okay. So does anybody want to make a motion to, what, her name was?
Lacy.
Lacy Stever, Stever, right. S T E V E R.
Okay, S T E V E R. Okay, um. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I can second.
Okay, so Sarah made the motion and Beth is second. What position is she taking?
Uh, she'll be uh primarily K five PE health.
Awesome. I just missed that at the beginning before I vote.
We're really excited.
But that's all I need.
It's gonna be so hard to replace Angie, but she's, this is, she seems very good and I think her and Brad will work really, really well together.
Awesome.
Great.
That's fantastic.
Okay, so um keep you posted on interviews and next month we'll hopefully have some more people to bring forward, so.
Yeah, okay, so we need to vote still. Um, so everybody's mics off. Uh, so all those in favor of hiring Lacy Stever for the PE health position, did you say aye? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Who, who made that motion?
Um, it was uh Sarah and Beth.
Okay, Sarah and Beth, good. And uh, yeah, that's great. And I, I'll, I'll reach out to her tomorrow, Christine. I think I think she's all, you sent me her resume.
I did.
Her paperwork. So I think Tina's got it already. It's a question of whether she gets the contract or a letter of intent. But you, did you, I, I can explain that to her again too, just so she knows the difference.
Yep. Great.
Okay, so the last um item on the agenda is uh kind of a, a peak at the um and I don't have a very descriptive peak, but a, a peak at the statewide budget. Um, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but um this year uh, the, taking a step back, the um the school ed, the statewide ed fund is paid for with a combination of property taxes um and uh like rooms and meals, lodging and lottery. Um, so in this uh isolation scenario, um rooms and meals, lodging and lottery have tanked. And so there goes the ed fund. Um, the federal government um gave a bolus of money uh that will prop up the ed fund. Um, the ed fund will be short for this current year, 2020. Um, the scary part, so we'll survive 2020 and there will be a deficit, but a lot of 2020 has already been paid for. Um, and so there's less concern there. The real scary part is 2021. Um, if we continue to have um a lot of people having lost their jobs and if the economy used to have crashed the way it has and I think we're expecting a certain amount of social distancing even going into 2021. Um, so there's a real concern that the ed fund is going to really, really um be sucked dry. And so we all need to be cognizant of that. Um, it's a scary proposition for schools and I sent out that email earlier today. I, my attitude is that the kids are gonna need the schools more than ever and they're gonna need the supports of the schools more than ever come September um and in 2021. And when we're at a time where we're gonna need the most support that we can possibly give them, we're gonna be at a time where financially we don't have any of the support that we need. So I'll open it up to you guys to go off of that conversation, but I think it's something that we need to start educating the community about. Um, I don't think that we have any solutions and I don't really feel ready to propose any solutions. Um, but it is something that we need to understand. Um, and the other, I guess the other pieces of information um is that we've missed the deadline to RIF teachers, which I think we're ready for anyway. Um, and uh, and then support staff, we have a little bit more flexibility if we felt that we needed to trim. Um, but again, personally, I'm not at a point where I'm ready to do any of that. So I'll open it up to you guys.
I did get an email today from the VPA with a, a link to send an email that, you know, they craft for you requesting funds for the next, for the next school year. I think seventy-five million dollars from the fed, from the federal government to the, to be state of Vermont. I, I don't know if we'll get that, but certainly people are talking about it and setting some things in motion to get um more people aware. And.
Yeah.
Request that's great. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and that, and that would make sense because that's about the short, the expected shortfall within that seventy to eighty million dollar range right now. It could get worse, but that's probably where that number came from.
Yeah.
The um, we just got an email from the School Boards Association, actually, like just ten minutes ago. And they are projecting a one hundred and fifty million dollar deficit.
It was a request for a hundred and seventy-five million, not seventy-five million.
Okay, well, this, the, the, yeah, they're just saying the deficit could be as high as a hundred and fifty million.
You mean the state deficit?
The ed, the, the ed fund deficit.
Well, the ed fund, yeah. Well, I know, I, I know when, during that, when, when he did that, and I know Nikki, you were on that call. I mean, at that point, and that was a week, week and a half ago. I mean, it was, it was around eighty million. So it sounds like it's growing you know, exponentially pretty quickly. So that's, that's not a good thing. That's not a good thing. So I think, I think the real, the real key to this is gonna be um you know, A, not to panic. I think B, I mean, because you, I mean, you could still have the Fed. They could come through. I'm not really optimistic, you know, given some of the calamities at that level right now, but um, I think we are gonna have to be careful and really take a look at our, at our our situation. We'll be all right this year. And matter of fact, Ed told me, you know, he, he's projecting and we can get him on the agenda or Nikki, you can, we can do more formally, present next month, but you know, in, in all of our districts, because of the way we've semi-stuck down here, we're gonna, you know, we're you know, we're gonna end up with a pretty good fund balance at the end of this year. But that's, you know, that's not something we, we can carry into next year. We can only carry that in to the year after. So it, it's gonna, if it's that kind of exponential deficit, then, you know, we're, we're gonna be in a lot of trouble. But you know what? So is everybody else.
So is everybody, right.
Something's, something's gonna have to give. Ed's recommendation right now, you know, and I think he's right, is we just try not to spend, don't hire any new staff. I mean, what Christine did tonight was replace a PE teacher that was on staff. But I think we've got to be careful about introducing new positions or new support staff or, and, yeah. So I think that's just where we, where we have to be right now.
So I think, I think, um, I might take this into executive session just so that people can talk more freely. But I think that, um, it sounds like we're all kind of on the same page of not panicking right now and, um, and staying the course. And, and I think David's suggestion of what he just made right now of not trying to spend a lot of money, not trying to do anything new and kind of cutting back on new initiatives and trying to hold the line where we can as far as, um, budgeting goes. I mean, at least right now, we're not spending a lot on materials because we know how much those cost in that budget. So, um, so I'm gonna really quickly, um, move on to setting the next agenda and then we can go into executive session and let Diane out. I don't think we'll talk for very long. I just feel like we should be able to...
Nikki. Nikki wants...
And Diane, go ahead. I'm sorry, Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, just, I mean, please, it, it warrants, uh, saying because the WSCSU negotiators are still not done with that job and with the teachers. They are with the support staff. And so that's another part of the communication that's been between the state and school board. I think it was on that letter that Sarah just said, reminding everybody that, uh, you know, that's a big piece of the pie right now and perhaps an opportunity for a lot of school districts to, to take another look and, and again, um, just re, restate with the communities, uh, along with the community, the importance of, of that negotiation process and in any long-term savings that could be add there.
Yeah. One of the things we could do, um, while Diane's still on the line, I'm not trying to drag this out. But as Scott said, we did, we did settle the, the, uh, support staff contract, uh, several weeks ago, just before we went, uh, we went into this crisis mode. And, uh, Scott, I don't know how you feel about this, but it's a public, now it's a public settlement. We need to ratify that tonight. We can, we can give you the one, one or two or three highlights of that right now. It will only take about two minutes, three minutes, and then we could, we could take a motion to ratify that tonight. Because Nikki's gonna have to put her signature on that contract, uh, as, as the board chair. So do you want to take, take a minute and just do that? Yeah. So, so, um, and Scott, you can fill in the blanks, Scott, if you want to, but I'll try to do this quickly. First of all, the benefits were negotiated by the Vermont Commission for School Employees, so we didn't have much say in the benefits. The truth is, we didn't lose a lot of money in the benefits because we were already offering a, 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 a good pack, a good benefits package. As a matter of fact, um, our support staff, basically, uh, you know, there was literally no out-of-pocket expenses or costs in, in there. There will be next year, but the district pays first. So in essence, unless they've got some major medical issues, they're not going to see a lot of out-of-pocket expense even as we go into, even as we go into next year. But, but that was a consideration that, you know, it, it, it definitely leaned in the teacher favor, but it didn't lean necessarily in the support staff favor. So in salary, we spent a lot of time on salary and we really felt with all the talk that was going on statewide about a fifteen-dollar minimum wage, our minimum wage was more in the fourteen, uh, maybe fourteen, fourteen dollars and thirty cents or forty cents, um, somewhere in there. So what we did is we added a dollar to that base step. Now, um, and now the, the base pay for our support staff will be in that fifteen-dollar, uh, range. And I think, you know, that that just sets a tone for probably the folks on our staff that need it the most. You know, our cafeteria workers, our custodians, as we bring in new people to support staff positions. We want to be equally competitive, uh, and, uh, and, and, and so that's how the negotiating team felt. The other areas of concern were, uh, around, uh, we had an old clause in the contract around float, floaters, two days of, of float time, which made no sense because now we basically pay our paraprofessionals and our support staff on a contracted year and they get a paycheck the same amount every first and fifteenth of the month, much like our teachers. They liked that and, and it worked. So we were able to, uh, eliminate those floaters and replace those with two holidays. Did not change the amount of days, uh, that, that they're, that they're working. We also, uh, we did do a significant, significant amount of work to the sick bank because right now the sick bank was by district. And I thought this was a great concession on the part of the support staff because a lot of our support staff are at the supervisor reunion right now and that sick bank just wasn't strong enough to uphold it. So what we did is we took the sick bank numbers of days from each of the four districts, including the SU, Mount of Scutney, Heartland, Weathersfield and the SU, and we pulled them all together. And now there's a supervisor reunion-wide sick bank that has, you know, probably about four hundred-plus days in it. So anybody, uh, who has a severe illness, a terminal illness, and they're just trying to get to that long-term disability phase, will be able to tap into that sick bank and we're not going to have to worry about Heartland's drying up or the SU's drying up or, uh, and, and, and we did the math and I think, uh, I think this is, this is gonna work, uh, for us. And then, um, the only other thing I think was, uh, we did get some concessions on, uh, paychecks because, uh, we were, we were offering pay over the summer, you know, so they'd get their pay in September and then we'd keep paying them in July and August after the fiscal year was over. And that was not, that was not helping us financially, nor was it really getting good grades from the auditor or the IRS. So they've agreed now to take that final lump sum in June and they will, they'll, they'll, uh, finance their own money over the summer so we can close out our books on June 30th. I thought that was a nice concession, uh, from them and, uh, and, 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 and that worked really, uh, in our favor. Can you think of anything else, Scott, that I left out? I kind of went over our TA proposals. I, I think that's it. You know, it's, uh, it, it's a small amount of money when you think about it in terms of our professional staff. But, uh, the truth is, we've got, we've got a fair number of support staff. When you put the custodians, kitchen workers, paraprofessionals, all in one spot, um, you know, it's, 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 it's almost a hundred employees. So, you know, and we want to treat them well and keep them on board. And, uh, and I think the negotiating team did a good job and it really was a win-win, I think, for, uh, for everybody. So, uh, if you have any questions, I can, I can answer those or Scott can. If not, we could take a motion to ratify the, uh, and by the way, it's a two-year agreement, which is just, it's, it's perfect because it lines up with when the next insurance proposal starts to kick in. So it'll go from this year through, uh, June of 22.
David, I think usually you give us the language to make the motion.
Yeah, so, so the motion and Diane, I, I assume Diane is listening. So the motion would be, uh, to, to ratify the support staff, uh, contract, uh, for the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand, uh, uh, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-two, uh, school year.
Hey, does anybody want to make the motion that David just said?
I move the question.
Right, good, perfect. Diane's got it down, I'm sure. She's very quiet tonight, but I know she's listening.
Okay, we got Beth for a second. We got Colleen to make the motion for a second. Okay, so everybody off, actually, is there any further discussion? David and Scott, I, I, the rest of the negotiating team. I think that this was, what David just described makes a lot of sense and I, um, the whole minimum wage thing has always really kind of bothered me and so I am pleased to hear that that's the direction that you guys went.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that. I know that it's not always easy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Are we ready? We look ready. Okay, all those in favor of approving the support staff contract for the fiscal year 20 to 22? Please, as David said earlier in his motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, ayes have it and it was approved. Thanks, David. That feels good having that off the table.
That's done, good. And we are trying to get the teachers done, but it's a little tough in this remote environment. And quite frankly, that, their contract is a little more complicated, but we'll keep you posted. We do have a proposal out there right now. We'll, we'll see what happens.
Okay, sounds good.
Great.
Okay, so, uh, now we're setting the agenda for the next meeting. I think, uh, we have a COVID update, um, hires and resignations. And, um...
Financial.
Budget update from Ed, so...
Yeah, that would be good. That would be good.
We'll either invite him or I'll talk to him ahead of time.
He's lonely.
He's lonely.
Would it be possible to also get some sort of statewide update, whether, you know, from our legislators or just to get a sense of what the thinking is at the state level about how these, you know, how this crisis is going to be dealt with for next year?
That's a great idea, Sarah.
Yeah.
And maybe we could even, I don't know, maybe we could even invite a couple of the legislators to join us.
Yeah. That's a great idea.
Yeah, what are the conversations that are going on, right, around, around the state? I did reach out to all, all of them this week, uh, the end of, the end of last week. And, you know, they're all, you know, they, they don't know now, but they think they will know in a, in a week or two. But, you know, we'll see, but it would be good to get some word from them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea. So we'll see who's willing to join us.
The other thing is, and I know this is perhaps harder, but to get, to try to get a sense too of, you know, what we're really looking at for the fall. I, you know, I think, I think knowing ahead of time allows us to plan and just to, I, it just would be helpful to all of us, I think, for, for what, if those conversations are already happening at the state level, just to know, you know, I mean, is, is there going to be another wave and we'll have to go back into lockdown? Is there, you know, just where that thinking is right now?
Based on everything I'm reading, I don't think anybody knows, but maybe in a month we'll have a better idea.
Yeah, I mean, just to, just to get a sense of what assumptions they're operating with at the state level.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a good point, too.
Okay.
And are we still, um, sticking with our same end date of school?
Good question.
That, that comes up, uh, quite often, um, and right now...
I have them counting the days.
Yeah, I know. I mean, if, you know, we, we did have three snow days, which is always, you know, fond, fondly remembered, you know. But there's a, there's a, there's a plan out there from the Vermont Superintendent's to the Secretary to waive all snow days this year so that we can get this madness to a little faster, a little bit quicker, quicker halt, if you know what I mean? Because I'm just trying to picture how everybody's gonna feel mid-June about. It almost still feels kind of like different and intriguing now, but I think it's gonna get old by about June 10th. But, but, so we'll see how that goes. You know, right now, we are technically done June 18th. That sounds like a long way off, doesn't it? But, but that's, that's the date. But if, if we get those waived, it would actually be the Friday before that, which I think is June, maybe 10th or 11th, somewhere in there. But, yeah, so we'll keep you posted on the, because he's not going to waive snow days for just one district. It's gonna have to be waived across, across the state. So we'll, we'll keep you posted.
That would be handy. Is there, I'm just gonna look at our radar list.
I'm amazed you still have that list. That, that's great.
I had her put it on the agenda.
Nice. I've got the agenda right here.
I think it's smart to have it on there to, for us to be keeping it in mind with our meetings.
This is exactly why I wanted it, so that we could look at it.
How many of those things have maybe been modified since our condition?
Yeah, like security. Right now. I do, I feel like our budget's getting a little, or our budget, our agenda is getting a little long for the next meeting, but I do, um, I'm worried about our special education population. And maybe, and I feel like now is too early because we're really, I, I would call day one the first real day of learning. So we might put in a quick special ed update.
Plus, I think it would be good for everybody to, I mean, Katie has essentially, Katie Hearn has essentially taken over now. I mean, Karen's kind of, you know, slowly easing out. So I, I think it would be good for everybody to, you know, meet with Katie and to kind of see where she's at. So we could do that either this time or, or the time right after that.
Yeah, so I'll put it on the tentative agenda, um, for Diane to look at and then when she sends it out before the meeting, Christine and I, and you can talk and decide how insane this list is.
I do want to say that I'm unbelievably impressed with our special educators right now. I mean, the, and our paraprofessionals, the amount of work that they're doing and the amount of connections that they've made with students has been phenomenal. And I know it's probably still not enough, but I mean, when you compare it to, um, from what I've heard, many other places in the state, it's just phenomenal, the work that they're doing.
That's, that's fantastic to hear.
Yeah.
Katie's really been on top of, I mean, there's a big section in the continuity of plan around services and, um, she's, we're in a lot of meetings like this, talking about all sorts of things, special ed related. So she is, she is on top of it. She's definitely leading the pack in a really great way. And we are...
Fantastic.
What that looks like, so it would be great to have her come.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
I've been really impressed too with interventionists, um, you know, Silas has been working with Ms. Jenny, um, twice a week, basically for a month, like since the beginning. And, um, it's been fantastic. Like, I think he's actually, his reading has improved over this last month, like leaps over from one traditional school. So I don't know why, but it's working.
One-on-one attention.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are, they are doing an incredible job, so.
Okay, um, well, I'm gonna move, uh, that we, or I would like somebody to move, that we go into executive session for a quick executive session to talk, um, numbers. Does anybody want to move that?
Don't move.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay. There were a lot of seconds. Diane, you can pick just about anybody. Okay, so David, do you turn off the recording at this point?
Hold on just a second. I wanna, um, yeah, I think we're getting there.
Diane, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Diane. Have a good night.
Yeah, you're off the hook now.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Diane. Know where it is to stop it? The record?